This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Harbor Media is recording tonight. Is anyone else planning to record? Okay, seeing none. I'll take a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session and to reconvene an open session for the purposes of discussing food service, substitute rate, and personnel issues, and I believe executive session minutes from December 6, 2021. I'm not reading it on the public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
So I would just make a motion to amend. It's not just food service, it's substitute pay overall. So it's the substitute pay rate and personnel issues.
Second, as amended.
All in favor?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. I don't think Carlos is on here. Alright, we'll see an executive session in a minute.
Okay.
Backs instead of recording. Okay, Harbor Media is recording tonight, and I see Jenna Manto from the Hingham Journal is also recording tonight. Is anyone else planning to record this meeting? Okay, seeing none, I will also just note that my, I'm Carrie Nie, and I'm participating remotely, as are my colleagues Michelle Air, Jen Benham, Ness Corenti, Carlos De Silva, Tim Dempsey, and Liza O'Reilly. So next we have, let's see, so we have item four point, oh, so 3.1 is to, so this is what we were talking about earlier. Okay, we'll table that until 48 hours. 4.1 is to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of December 6, 2021. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of December 6, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll, I'll in favor. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So minutes are approved. 4.2 minutes to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of December 9, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of the school committee meeting of December 9, 2021.
Well, second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm tending, using my phone, so I can open the minutes at this moment. Is this the one that we had a discussion about the Sustainability Director? I believe so.
That was the one on the 6th, Carlos, the one that we just approved.
Oh, Jesus. Okay, not a problem. I was just going to make a suggestion for a correction there. Is that okay if I backtrack a little bit?
Does anyone have an issue with that?
No.
Okay, what did you want to?
I think, I think the discussion that we had about the Sustainability Director obviously was allowed to be present on the agenda because there was a thought that, you know, you know, we had the, you know, some sort of support. And the way it reads right now on the minutes is that it was, after discussion was, we decided it was not a purview of the school committee. I would rather say that, you know, we strike purview of the school committee. We, the discussion led to table the discussion and to further notice. Because I think, you know, the concern here is that, I'm not sure, I mean, you know, you know, unfortunately, it was presented really, really late. I wish we had time to discuss editing the resolution. So I'm just concerned that, and I do hope to bring this back eventually. So if, you know, if it's okay with the school committee, I would like to strike the word, the standard purview of the school committee. Instead, you know, because I didn't want to draw the resolution, instead, you know, perhaps read that we tabled the discussion and that, or, you know, just leave at that, I would draw the resolution for the time being. If that's okay with you.
So the thing is, we didn't agree to do that. But I mean, I think we could, there's probably another way to do it. Did you have something?
Yeah, I was just thinking if, because I think the wording in the minutes is true to the spirit of the discussion, but it doesn't, is the issue, Carlos, that it implies that we had a vote and voted that it was not the purview of the school committee? Because that, that we didn't take a vote, and we didn't come to a decision that it was the purview, wasn't the committee, we, that came up in the discussion.
Exactly. So that, that was not a vote, yes.
I think I agree with Carrie. I think that it, the minutes reflect the discussion, but I don't think that precludes you from bringing it back another time if you want to.
Okay, if you find then, so be it.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I just, you know, yeah, I just didn't, you know, I feel, I felt that, you know, I shouldn't have brought that forward if the, you know, if the Chair didn't feel that, you know, was, we didn't, it wasn't the purview of the school committee. You know what I mean? Since you're allowed to be presented, then perhaps your, on your judgment was on the purview of the school committee.
It was the, the discussion was the purview of the school committee, and I put that on the agenda at your request, Carlos. And I think what happened was a discussion saying that, that we did not want to do a resolution at that time. And it sounded like the climate, the representative from the Climate Action Committee was supportive of that too. But that, nothing precludes you from bringing it again if you want to rework it or work with, with that committee and see if, if that would be a good thing.
That's fair. Thank you.
I just, I think, I just think it's important that the minutes reflect the actual discussion, but I, but also I don't think that stops you from bringing it forward again if you want to. So, yeah, Liza?
Yeah, I mean, I, I remember suggesting that we table it, but possibly the minutes could say that instead, it says, right now it says that they feel that this is outside their purview. And I remembered it that we felt that submitting, voting on the resolution at this time was outside, to, the resolution at this time was outside of our purview. Not making a comment about the sustainability. So maybe could we change it to making it more specific, saying after a discussion, the committee members agreed that they feel that submitting this resolution is outside of their purview? So that it's specific, that this is specific, using that pronoun.
Yeah, because I think your concern was the way it was written, too. I mean, because we didn't really entertain the, the idea of editing the resolution, which is something that we usually do on every single resolution that we bring forward. So, I mean, I don't think that would change anything. So, you know, that's, doesn't matter. Whatever you decide to do, it's fine. Because I do intend to bring this back again, but, you know, with due time and with the full input from the committee, perhaps I will bring this even to a subcommittee before here.
Could we, could we edit it to say after, after a discussion, the committee members agreed that it would be inappropriate to bring this forward at this time?
That would be more fair, I would say.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, that's more accurate, I would say.
Okay. All right, someone to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to reapprove the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 6, 2021 with, as amended by Chairperson Nie.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I'll in favor. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So those are approved. For the minutes from December 9th, we give a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that one? Okay, seeing none. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. 4.3 approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting of December 14, 2021.
Motion to approve minutes of the school committee meeting of December 14, 2021.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none. All in favor. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos? Sorry, Carlos, you're muted.
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Minutes are approved. 4.4 approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting of December 15, 2021.
Move to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of December 15, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So those minutes are approved. Section 5 is questions and comments. The school committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please use the raise hand function on Zoom. And when, when recognized, unmute yourself, state your name and your address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts General Laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So, all that being said, if anyone has a comment, please use the raise hand function. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we will move on to number six, which is the superintendent's report. Gary?
Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of items to report tonight. It's really tied to COVID and where we are with that. I have some comments for the strategic plan and, but I'll save that for that agenda item. One of the things that I just wanted to share with everyone is our COVID data will be sent out every Friday through my office, and that will list the cases that we have by school for the week. So we started that last Friday. We weren't doing that prior to last Friday. The numbers were, were low. They have been creeping up, as we have all realized. And one of the things that has become somewhat inundating for the schools is testing and also close contact issues that schools are going through. So it's, it's become rather inundating for our nurse offices and for administration in our, in our buildings. So I just want everyone to know that we'll get that data out on Fridays. One of the other things that we have noticed is a lot of the, the close contact issues that we realize are coming off the weekends and are, are coming from outside of school, which, one of the things that we were notified by the Department of Education about a week ago is the test and stay model for teachers has been pulled back from the Department of Education. We're looking at a solution to be able to do testing for teachers in school. I think the inundation of testing that's happening through CIC is causing such a backlog of, of testing and getting the results to schools in a timely manner. And also, CIC is, is really struggling to keep people employed. We, we've actually done well with keeping our staff with CIC in our schools, but even then, you know, we were walking through buildings last week and going to the nurses' offices when we were touring the superintendent candidates around, and they're extremely busy just with pool testing and regular test and stay options. So that's one of the, you know, reasons why we've, we've had some hiccups with, with that process. It is getting a lot more cumbersome and busy as the school district is managing that. The next thing I want to report on is we are going to be doing another run on our vaccination status for students in the district. We're going to run data ages 5 through 11 to actually see what those numbers are, and then we're going to run our 12 years and above. And we're going to see what that number looks like. We're going to add a different twist to this data collection piece. One of the things that we, we've known for, you know, since the beginning of, of this discussion regarding the state database, which we pull information from, is that data is somewhat inconclusive, because there are a number of scenarios that play out when people are vaccinated. The MIS data that is stored is relative to clients, students, adults who were vaccinated in Massachusetts. If we had students that were vaccinated in another state, that is not included in the MIS data system. In addition, if there is a discrepancy in the way a name is spelled, or a name is recorded through the state database, it may not show up in our database that we extract through the MIS system. So what we're going to do right after the holidays is we're going to do a new data run from the database. We're then going to send a letter home to parents of students who do not show up on the database, informing them that we are not, we don't have information, we're lacking information relative to the vaccination status of their child. We will ask parents to submit that information. If they choose to, if they do not choose to, that's their prerogative. But we would like to get a more complete run of data of our students, and we'll also have new data for 5 to 11. So, parents, after the holidays, if some of our schools already have data on, on the 5 to 11, because some, with the test and stay model, some parents have brought that information voluntarily, and we started recording it. So we do have some of that information. So we'll be doing that right after the holidays. It, it will depend on when we actually are able to get a clean set of data from the MIS system. We'll have to do a mail merge of students that aren't identified as vaccinated. We'll send a letter out to parents. But we want parents to know that if they want to help us to tighten up our database, that would, that assistance would be much appreciated. The second layer to this is, starting next week, we're going to ask teachers in the district to drop off, if they're available, next week, we'll have buildings staffed, and, and they are typically staffed during the holidays. We're going to ask staff if they are available and they would like to drop off their vaccination information to this, to their school office. Each building will send out a note to staff to let them know the hours of school operation so that they can drop off a photocopy, a photocopy of their vaccination card. I know my healthcare provider actually has an app, and I can actually see my information on the app. If they bring us that documentation, we will make a copy, or they can bring a copy, we'll record it, and we'll put that into our information system. We will then shred all that information. The only database that we will have will be the one that we have electronically, and we'll manage that. I also want to let our staff know they can drop it off next week when the office will be, will be open. Each building will actually send a notice of what hours of operation and what time it will be open, and the dates, I mean. And we'll, we'll also collect, for staff that are not available, on the 4th, 5th, and 6th of January, we will be collecting that information so that we can insert all that into our database. And this is just to get a really good sense of where we are in the district. I know some districts have done this already. We're going to do it here in Hingham to be able to have that number. So I anticipate by middle of January, we should have all that information relative to a snapshot in time of, of where that vaccination stand, sta- status is for all our buildings. As, as you know, the, the state looks at vaccination status by building, not by district. So we will definitely have that number and share it with the school committee and the community at large.
Great, thank you. It's, it's a lot of work to put that all together, on top of everything else that everyone's doing. So we appreciate it. Tim?
I was just wondering if we were also collecting data on boosters for older students and staff?
Yes, if we have that, the MIS system actually has that information as well. So, you know, what we will do is, we will run the data, and we'll see where the discrepancies are. And if somebody has both of these points, you know, the first dose, second dose, you know, it's not required, the booster is not required as far as the state is concerned, from my knowledge. But we may send something out to see if we get that update as well. But I believe that MIS system will definitely, definitely have that, have that information.
Now, that information's not required now. Probably, I'm guessing it will be, become more important like a few months from.
I, I would say so. But we'll do everything we can to try to make it as, as inclusive as possible. It just, I just want the community to know that this is cumbersome. We have limited staff. HR Director Yamato has done some work to try to get us some temporary support to be able to help our nurses' offices and maybe do some of this logging. But we're gonna, we're gonna work diligently to try to get it done. Again, I think our, our staff across the board, faculty and staff are somewhat at a capacity level just managing schools at this point. So we'll do what we can, but I will, we'll work hard to make that happen.
Yeah, and then it'll be on the website at some point, once we have all the information. Great. Yeah.
And I think our communications staff, staff member will, will, will send something out that, that will update the community. I, I really kind of want to share this with school committee, then we'll share it with the community. So I think it'll go in that order. I know it will.
Great. I think that'll be good information for all of us to have, so.
Yes.
Okay, so thank you for that. So next we have communications. 7.1 is student communications. Elijah is unable to join us tonight, but he sent a statement that I can read, and I will. But I just want to thank him and all of the students and the Student Advisory Committee for all of their help with the superintendent search. I mean, this is a very busy time of year for all of the students, and they took a lot of time to meet with the candidates. They asked great questions. They got information that we didn't get. We spent all day with them. I mean, they were really, very engaged, and I just feel very lucky to have them as part of the process. So Elijah's statement was that this past week, and for some time now, actually, our committee has been heavily involved in the interview process for selecting our new superintendent. Students from a variety of clubs and organizations outside our committee also participated in this process, and we are proud to report on such a high level of engagement with such an important issue. As this process is beginning to enter the final phases, during which student input, though still important, obviously does not have an actual vote, we are shifting our sights towards a new accessibility initiative we have organized, which in the name, name of more effective retention, will probably be brought up after break. The first phase of this is the creation of a direct communication method between the student body and our committee, and thereby this committee, which has already been completed. We hope that this improved accessibility will create an effect, a more effective means by which students may voice concerns, problems, grievances, opinions, and all such things. On behalf of the student body and the committee, we thank you again for the continued opportunity to be engaged with the important decisions, and we will continue to work diligently to ensure our purpose is fulfilled. So we thank Elijah for that. Communications received by the superintendent. Do you have anything, Gary? Yep. Okay, does, okay, thanks. Anyone else on the committee? Any communications? No. Okay. Oh, I see a hand up. Rebecca in the Sitco.
Hi, it's Rebecca in the Sitco by Billy Pond Lane. I'm just wondering how many people are on tonight, and are we doing the communications from the parents and other attendees in the community, the period to ask questions?
So I apologize, Rebecca. I meant to announce that in the beginning of the meeting. There are 37 people, 37 attendees on the call, in addition to the, the people that you see on the panel. And we already passed that agenda item earlier. There were no comments.
Thank you.
Okay. So next is other communications. We don't have any. So 8.1 is an update on the superintendent search. I can take this, this one. Pull my notes. So we've been engaged in that. That's been pretty much everything that we've been doing over the past couple of, the past week, really. Here, let me just, here it is. So just to update the public for anyone who has, was, was in rounds last week, the four candidates that were under consideration visited Hingham last week on Tuesday and Wednesday. They were very long days. They toured all six buildings, met with the central office team, the leadership team, the staff, and then they had their public interviews in the evening. If anyone on the call wants to watch the interviews and learn more about the candidates, they're available on Harbor Media's YouTube channel, and their, their resumes and information is also up on the Hingham Public Schools website. There's a community feedback forum available on the HBS website, and I think our Facebook page, it, that will be shut down tomorrow because we're going to be talking about next steps. But if you have, have had a chance to watch the videos and you want to give us our feedback, you could get that tonight. That would be, would really appreciate it. We also sent the links to the interviews and the staff feedback forum to June Gustafson, and appreciate her help getting it out to the staff. So when the candidates were here, Gary and several members of the school committee escorted the candidates around. And personally, I really enjoyed getting to know them a bit better. We're really fortunate to have four extremely qualified candidates. And so now our job is to figure out who the best person is to lead Hingham forward at this time. So we've each been calling references provided by the candidates to learn more about them. And we're also reaching out to anyone we might know in these communities that have relevant information about the candidates. It's fascinating to learn more about the candidates, but also to hear about what other districts are doing too. So it's been a good process. So we're, we're planning to meet tomorrow evening to discuss next steps, and whether there are candidates we want to learn more information about, or if we feel like we have enough. We've, we've been doing our homework separately, and we haven't, this will, tomorrow will be the first time that we have a chance to, to talk. So I don't know what the next steps will be, but we can, we'll discuss it then, and we'll see, see where we are, and if we're ready to vote, or if we want to go and do some more homework and maybe some site visits, which is what we did last time. We're in really good shape right now, because we started our process last summer and have really stuck to this, the timeline. So I just want to thank everyone on the committee and then in this, and on the staff for, for the discipline, because it gives us access to the best candidates out there during a time when there are many districts looking for superintendents. I also wanted to thank everyone who's volunteered in the process so far, because it's, it's been a considerable time commitment. The staff members, the students I mentioned earlier, the community members who served on our screening committee, the leadership team, the building staff, the central office staff, the PTO presidents were great at escorting the candidates around for the meetings. And in the students who did a great job. And I also want to mention that we're extremely grateful to Sherri Robertson for all of her logistical and organizational help throughout the process, and especially during the candidate visits, because we keep thinking that while we're evaluating candidates, they're also evaluating us. And I think, thanks to Sherri's efforts, I think we represented Hingham well for that day. So, so again, next steps is that we will be meeting tomorrow, and we'll talk about it. Does anyone have any questions, or anyone else on the committee have anything else to say to that? Okay, seeing none. Next we have an update on the strategic plan. Gary, do you want to?
Yeah. Sherri, can you let me share my screen?
You should be able to.
Okay.
Yep, there you go.
Okay. All right. So I just want to share with you what the strategic planning calendar looks like, just so that the community will know the process and, and actually get a sense of where we are. So we're going to be in the next, you know, month, collecting a great deal of data. That's every bit of data that we can, we can find that really tells a story with, with this data of the kind of district Hingham is. So it's going to be a pretty wide, you know, collection of information. So we're going to be collecting that. We're going to identify by January 13, the Strategic Planning Committee, and there will be 20 people that have to really work through all of this information to, to begin to formulate the strategic plan, the framework. Our consultants will be helping to guide the process and narrowing down all this information, but they are charged with But they are charged with really keeping this group on task. We will begin to work in February for third to the eighteenth, we'll be serving the administration. We're going to do focus groups. We'll have five focus groups. We'll do a focus group on January twenty fourth from four to five thirty with staff and faculty. We'll do Johnny twenty seventh from three to four thirty with leadership. We'll do a focus group on the twenty seventh from seven to eight thirty with school committee. We'll do a focus group on February third from seven to eight thirty, and that will be for a community, parents. We'll do another one for the municipal side of of Hingham and and that'll be virtual. I will put out there that if we feel that it's necessary to have another focus group based on availability, based on what we're hearing from our community, we will add another focus group. Keep in mind, while the focus group groups are taking taking place, probably early February, a survey will go out to the community at large. And this, we we're really looking for as much feedback as we can possibly get. It's a, it's a lengthy survey, probably take about ten to fifteen minutes to complete. But it will give the stakeholders of the community the opportunity to do Likert scale type questions, but also comments that people can ask in detail, not ask, but contribute in detail. The next section identifies the dates for the Strategic Planning Committee, and these are the dates that the team will meet. It'll be February twenty second, March fifteenth, April sixth, April twenty eighth and May eighteenth. The last meeting will be May eighteenth. And I do realize on the focus group, the the third focus group that we have listed, there may be a conflict there with school committee. So we might have to look at that date and possibly change it. One of the things we tried to do was have the consultants here on the twenty seventh and spend from three to roughly nine o'clock in the dish without having to have them come back. So we might, whatever we change that twenty seventh date to, we may, we may have to change the leadership one as well. So. With that said, we have a number of of people that are really looking forward to this. I think it will really help to shape where we are in 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 the district for the for the future. And hopefully we will meet our timeline. I think that's the goal. And it's a rigorous process. But we are looking at having a published strategic plan that will go out to the community by July first. So the at the end of May, if there is a level of consensus to that that document, it'll come to school committee probably in early June. Once school committee approves the strategic plan, appropriate edits are made. Then it will go to a graphic artist where they will actually make a presentable document that will be shared with the community once it's approved. So we have an aggressive timeline. It seems to be the theme for what we're doing in education these days. But I just wanted to share with the community and and the school committee, that is our our timeline and and we'll see what we can do to to make it work.
Great, thank you. Eliza, do you have something?
Thank you, Gary. Can you just talk about who the Strategic Planning Committee would include the twenty people?
Yeah, we're talking school committee. We're talking staff, faculty, staff. We're talking community members. So it'll be a wide variety of, you know, people from town. So we have twenty people. It's hard to manage a group of twenty, but our consultants feel that it's beneficial to have a broad group. It'll be administrators. We're going to try to represent stakeholders, students. So it'll be a broad section of of cross section of of stakeholders for the Hingham community.
So we're coming up close. So then the week of January third, we're going to be outreach for people to ask people who would want to. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. And so for the school committee end of it, we can't, we need to keep it three or less because we don't want to quorum. So if anyone is interested in serving on that committee, if you could just shoot me an email and we can go, we can see, see who's interested and go from there.
Yeah, we we got to get moving. The consultants are ready to go. We have three consultants that will be working in the district. And I think I think they'll do a great job for for us.
Great. This is exciting. So it's nice to get going on that.
It's hard, but but very necessary.
Definitely. Yeah. And it'll be good, I think, to give it to the the next superintendent. We'll have it ready to go for that person. Um, so great. So next is nine point one to discuss potential changes to the town naming by law and act as appropriate. I'd received that email, which is in the pack packet. They're looking at that and they're asking for comments, I think by January fourth. Does I was share a policy, see what we have decided for our for our part. Does anyone have any comments? I was, what I was thinking is I could kind of compile everyone's comments and share them with that committee either in, send them a note or go to that meeting, depending on the schedule. Does anyone have any input on that you want? Yeah, Eliza?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. So that my first question is, I guess, what the timing is, because they're having this meeting January fourth. And I was curious, because they have a lot of information they're going to collect. And I would, I'm wondering if they're planning on putting an article forth for town meeting for this year, because then the deadline is January twentieth. So you know, when could we comment on or give input after they get this next round of information? Or are they leaving it that we just get to comment during the review process prior to town meeting? So that would be one question I would have. I would also ask if they're going to consider any type of diversity initiative, equity, inclusion of who would be considered for the naming across the town? Just to keep that in mind, that's part of the master plan for the town as well as our own initiatives, but just keeping that in mind. And then in the bylaw under the procedure number two, it's saying so anything has to be approved at town meeting. That's number one. And then any proposed name has to be submitted to the select board. And then there's a public hearing and with advice of the Hingham Historical Commission, the board shall forward its recommendation to the annual town meeting. And I'm wondering if it could be, if we could suggest that we include the board who's responsible for or the department or agency having jurisdiction over the buildings or lands. Just to make sure that, you know, if the general public is putting something forth, that they actually include the board that's responsible for those buildings. And that they have some recommendation too for town meeting. And oh, and then a number five that says the Board of Selectmen may establish standards and specifications for signs, plaques, markers, or other features to be erected on public property within the town. I would ask if these are, have been established that they then be included in the new bylaw as opposed to leaving it open. I realized when the bylaw was written that that wasn't specified yet. But if they know it, it should be included. So I didn't have time to really think through all of our processes of how we've gone through namings and whether we have a live person or you know, I know that we encourage not to construct things in memory of people in the event, but to have scholarship funds is our recommendation. So I also would hope that this isn't encouraging more and more of the naming of things. But I understand, especially regarding fundraising, how that can be a critical component of raising private funds especially. So I I under, I I get it of where they're trying to go, but to be a little cautious too.
Okay, that's really helpful. Does anyone else have anything on this one? So Liza, if you're all right with it, I'll pull all the your comments together. I had a couple too. Okay. Put them in a document and in in link to our policy too. And I'll share it with you so you can take a look and then we we can pass it on to them and see if they have any questions. But but those are all good points. Okay, so next is to appoint Jen Benham as the School Committee Representative for the School Facilities Master Plan Review Committee. Ness, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so as part of the Finance and Capital Subcommittee Group, we have a goal this year. We have a school and facilities master plan that has been created by Habib. And we did this back, I think in two thousand and five, and John can correct me if I'm wrong. And through that process, when they went through the report, we had a group of people, there were town members, there was a school committee member, there was somebody who was selected by the the select board. So a host of people who came together to review the report that Habib had done and just kind of poke holes in it. And they had different subcommittees to to focus on different matters. It was about a three month process to go through that. And we were looking for somebody here on the school committee to work with John and his group to to kind of go through that process this time again. And Jen is part of the Finance and Capital and Facilities Subcommittee Group. So thought that she'd be a good representative for us.
Yeah, thank you, Jen, for doing that. And I just also want to thank the the other town boards who are coming up as representatives too, to hopefully we can get this going relatively soon. So because it's important work. So next.
I think Carrie that Ray, excuse me, have.
Oh, I apologize. Right. Oh, Ray, if you want to unmute yourself and just give us your name and address.
Thanks, Ray Estes, ninety two four Hill Street. So I have a question. So what what Habib report are you referring to?
Sorry. So it is a report that they are going through and doing a master plan for just the school facilities to go through what what there's a ten year plan that kind of looks out what needs to happen with our school facilities, not the town, but the school facilities.
So you're referring to a new study that's going to be done?
This has already been done. It's in the process of being done. And I believe they have a completed report that John has been working with them on.
In the past, in the past year, this has been undertaken?
Yes. The school committee approved some of the financing of this back. I don't recall the the month that we did this, but we had approved the budget for that.
And they're looking at every school property, including the depot properties?
Is the depot included in that, John?
They've looked at, they have a letter concern of one seventy nine and building twelve. But in in not every school, Ray, the, you know, Foster wasn't addressed. There wasn't a lot of consideration given to the newer, you know, middle school and stuff or e-school, but they were focusing primarily on. But but they do have references to all the schools. You know, with the exception of Foster, I don't think we had, I'd have to look at, I don't think we did anything on Foster. Because we knew that was being handled with a different venue.
And and for and forgive me, I'm just, I obviously haven't attended every meeting. And obviously you have a lot of work to do and it is what it is. But I I I don't think I would have missed this. And I actually reached out and spoke to somebody close to this and they had no idea what this was, who's involved at your level. So I'm just, I don't recall this at all. And I'm just trying to get a little bit more information. What's the is this, is this like a strategic looking facilities study to kind of piggyback off of what was done in two thousand and six? And identify, you know, large projects, potential for, you know, like what's the next new school that might need to be done? Or is it more of a capital project? I'm just trying to figure out what, I just don't recall it. I apologize.
Well, that's okay. I mean, you know, the the, we did talk about it and we had money reallocated from the vest of yule to, you know, undertake this type of study to sort of complete the master plan. Because over the years, we've actually had reports that have looked at the envelopes of our schools and at the mechanicals of our schools. And they've taken those reports along with the two thousand and ten master plan and, you know, some additional review things to put together a document that will, you know, refresh really the two thousand and six plan or ten plan to give the district, they'll look for the next ten years or so. So that's basically what they've done. They've compiled a number of items based on other studies we have plus their reviews. You know, plus what may be left over from the previous, you know, A I three report there to create a new document that can be available to the district so that when we do large projects such as roofs or you know, and the other infrastructures that we have with the exhibition specifically with the high school, with south school, perhaps the P R S roof. And those types of things, you know, when are those going to need to be done? So so that's really what the report's doing. And they have presented, you know, a draft report to us, which is been available to, you know, review. So now we're looking to have a committee go take a look at that report. And, you know, pick out the pieces that we really need to be concerned with over the next ten years.
Gotcha. Understood. Thank you.
Michelle?
Sorry, Carrie. Thanks. I I'm just curious to who, do we know who else is going to be on this committee from the town? Or are we sort of the first group to?
The select, the select board appointed Tom Mayo to that board. And I had reached out to the building committee. So I was kind of surprised at the comment. And Linda was going to put it on the agenda for one of their meetings. I haven't, I haven't heard back, but I can, I can check. And then it is also with Ness, what was the other committee that we've?
Capital Outlay. So Eric Valentine, he's the chair of that Capital Outlay, and he will also be the representative.
Yep. And I think that's it, right? Just.
Yeah, so we would, I'm going to read off, school committee representative, school building committee representative, a select board appointee, capital outlay representative. We would look for a community representative appointed by the school committee and then the school department staff resources. So the only other position now would be the committee, I mean, the the school committee representative, a community person.
Right. So do you want to put some, we can put something, oh, maybe send some information to Heather and see if we can get, I can, I can make a Google form or something. And if anyone's interested, they can apply. And then when would we like to have the have the committee completely formed?
I think John was looking for somebody that the team as soon as possible because he does have the draft report. So he was just waiting for us to get the people lined up.
Okay, so end of the first week in January for a deadline for community members. Is that too aggressive or too slow or?
That sound good, John?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, as soon as we get the committee going, they can get started on it. Yeah. So, you know, I mean, the Yep.
All right, I'll get that sent to Heather. I can, I can work on it tonight and get it short. And and okay.
Thanks. And thanks, Jen.
Yes, thank you. Next is to update the committee on the fields task force. We've discussed this one before too. And so and Ness and John, you jump in here if you have anything to add or get anything wrong. So last year, the rec department commissioned a field study by Weston and Sampson. And one of the recommendations was to bring the management of all our town fields under one entity so we can operate more efficiently. And last summer, the policy subcommittee worked with the rec department to make sure that the field use application aligned with our school policies as well as they took over the management. So since then, Mark Farrell at the rec department has been managing the fields and working with with our people, with Doug Foley and Katie Hartman. And they have been doing a really great job with the managing it. But as they've worked through that, they've recognized some real needs in all of our town athletic assets. And I, when I say town, I mean, it's not just the school department, it's other fields and other assets. So Ness, John and I have kind of informally been meeting with Mark Farrell and Vicky Donlin from the rec department. And we were joined by Phil Ramsey from the select board, Tom Mayo, last time about where just to talk about where to go next. And what we kind of like to see happen is for a group to form to kind of oversee or drive this forward. And so it's not like the school department in one silo and the rec department in one silo managing our facilities, but to bring it all together. So we can be just more more efficient, more effective in the way we're managing these things. And I think it would be good for the community for the two groups to work together too. So anyway, one of the things we were discussing is that there are all these assets that have been identified as a prior for a priority list of needs. And the managers of this, so Mark and Doug and Katie identified the tennis courts at the high school as like is the highest priority. The pictures are in your packet. If you had a chance to look at them, there's one that's at least one that's unplayable. And because it's it's dangerous because of cracks. So Mark had reached out and got estimates of what it would cost to renovate the courts, which are also in your packet. And we discussed the possibility of submitting a warrant article for town meeting to to rent renovate it. We discussed the town and the school department, like all gather, we have a very full warrant this year. And obviously, from our end, foster and, you know, our budget need to be the most the highest priorities. But we tied, we talked about potentially if we are able to do this warrant article, it would be, we would do it jointly with the school department and the rec department, which would hopefully increase support for the project. Again, even the most expensive fix for this would be under a million dollars too. So did anyone have any thoughts or questions on this?
I don't, other than, I'm so sorry, but I did not. I'm trying to find it in my packet, the pictures and the.
It's in a folder.
Yeah.
It's I see the folder, but it won't give us access.
Oh, gosh, okay.
I just.
That's what I had the issue. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. All right. So let me see. Did you request access?
I just did.
You did. Okay. I am sorry about that.
Yeah, Carrie has a little history too. These were like, we we resurfaced these and and keep in mind resurfacing means they clean out the cracks. They fell it with some material and they 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 cover it with a sort of mesh. So it's not like, you know, any really hard surfaces or something. We're filling those cracks or so. But, you know, that was about seven years ago, maybe eight years ago, probably back in 2012. So in these fixes are very temporary. You know, they're back at that point, we were doing the field project. And, you know, this was one of the first steps. And then another step is we did the track. And then, of course, the last step got the multi-purpose field in. But, you know, so they're showing their age. And over the years, we've spent a few thousand dollars a year, you know, anywhere between three and five of putting in some additional maintenance to them. But you can clearly see with the pictures now that those mesh, you know, and there's probably more mesh than what we see for cracks there. Because there was a significant amount of mesh. And after you finish, they look like really good courts. But, you know, they do look like they're ready for replacement.
Yep. Okay. Did everyone get them now? Yeah, Liza, did you have something?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Do we, did they, did Mark mention how much the Plymouth River Courts cost? Were they comparable? Amount?
I don't know. Did he do new courts, the lies, or did he ref, did he refinish them? I I am.
They're new. They're brand new services. Surf, the surface is.
Okay, so they they tore the whole.
Cracks are gone.
They tore the whole thing. Well, this is a total reconstruction. So that all of all of everything you see in those pitches will be gone.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm I I played on the courts. I know. I know the cracks. So I I recognize I'm just, it's a, this number that he's presenting is a huge number. And so I'm just trying to be able to put it into context so that the community can understand the context of it.
Yep, there were two different versions from our discussion. One was, you know, typical asphalt. And this is a concrete solution, which is like more of a 25 year deal with versus the asphalt might be 15. Asphalt, I think Carrie and Ness, correct me, that study said somewhere on the 500,000 line, you know, place. And this 864 is a concrete product that I forget what the exact term of it, if it, you know, if it says it or not, but, you know, which will be a longer lasting, you know, longer lasting surface.
Yeah.
Yep.
He also has there's, I mean, there's $250,000 of well, there's contingency, soft costs, mobilization, overhead and profit. What's that? What's, why are we putting profit on as a cost?
It's probably the the formation of the quote that he received. I didn't, I didn't, is that quote, is that in here? Because lots of times, that's the way the the contract will present their information.
Okay, is it like their fee for doing it?
They have to make some money. So they, here's my little markup. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, understandable. I mean, they're, but yeah, I mean, I I agree, this needs to be done. It's it's a big, it's a big chunk with everything going on in the town. And I guess I would also then I know it's for the high school, but that's, you know, we have to figure out how to sell it to the town. So that it's more than just the high school, but it's an asset that people use and it's it's unusable right now. So it's something we have to, we have to do at some point.
Right. Yeah, I think it's part of the idea is to start looking at these as community resources rather than school resources only. And so.
And that's with that land group or the, you know, not the land group, the fields group. I mean, that's what they're supposed to be doing, taking care of the community resources. Needless to say, this one is used for, you know, competitive sports. But, you know, tennis is one season a year, but they're used all year long, right? So it really is a community. And I think that's the, you know, so we've been talking with the with the rec commission and Mark's group, you know, that fields group. And we're trying to give it a life of its own too, because it should take on a life of its own if it's going to do this. So that, you know, it it we 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 want that group out there to say, hey, it's time for the infrastructure to get updated on on certain projects, you know, instead of each department buying for their own. And then sometimes some get it and sometimes some don't. This one group can kind of like look at all the assets together and and create a priority priority schedule so that they stay consistently maintained over the successive 10, 20, 30 years, you know, get that, make that, make that progress and just keep the capital planning going and and the constant upkeep of our assets.
Yeah, and Mark started to go through and and do that and with working with Doug and Katie about looking at all the facilities in town and what this that schedule might look like. And then the other interesting thing about that, if if this group gets started, and obviously, the rec would have a seat at the table, the school department would have a seat at the table and other interested people, but it's also could be a good opportunity for some grants. There are other communities who in, I know Adrian Ramsey on the rec commission has done some exploration of that. And we might be able to go find other sources of funding for some of these things, probably not the tennis courts of the high school, but, you know, but other places in the community. So it's it's kind of, it's a good thing, I think. So.
So I, you know, I was under the understanding that perhaps rec would take over and and they would actually introduce their warrant article. Perhaps we would support them on it. Is this some, is the turf at the high school? I mean, they are overseeing that as well, correct?
Yep.
So do do we do we know what is the condition of the turf? Because I know that it's coming to, I believe, seven years of life on that.
Nine years.
10 years?
Nine.
Nine. So have we looked at John? I mean, are we trying to get a price to see what's that going to cost and when when we were going to need to replace that?
Yep. No, we did look at that. Yeah, actually, I just recently reached out to Brad, you know, and asked Rob Delmonico and Jim Doherty to take a peek. And, you know, he did send back to me because I wanted to get a better estimate for the various committees that I'm on. So we have some idea what our capital needs will be in the future. But he did said there's no urgency to that field to be done this year and gave me a price for, you know, of probably somewhere around 700,000. And that's with a $125,000 surface softener, if you would. You know, so I think between 700 and 800,000 to replace that, and it would be probably a year or two away.
Okay, thank you.
Jen, did you have your hand up?
I did, but Liza asked it, so thank you.
Okay, all right, great. All right. Any other questions from the committee? Okay, I see Ray, Ray Estes. Sorry about that. I think Sherry tried to meet you at the same time, so.
I think I'm good now. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street. Thanks. Just real quick. So I went back, I think the rec got CPC money in town meeting of 2020 for the Plymouth River Courts. It was 75,000 at the time. It was Article 18 in the in the 2020 annual town meeting. So I will tell you that that was not a complete restructuring and blow up of it. It was just what we did to the high school in 2012. So it's phase one, as you remember, of of the fields project, it was the tennis courts and the track resurfacing. And at the time, the town engineer Roger Fernandez, who consulted with the ad hoc field study committee, recommended that we could save money and didn't have to blow up the whole thing and spend 250,000 by doing a kind of a patch job and just a resurfacing, which I think cost about 50,000 or so at the time. But as a result, we started to see cracks emerge maybe after four years. And now here we are, nine years out from that work. And it's, I think someone used the word unusable, unplayable, right? So I think that we've heard for many years that the town doesn't do a great job of maintaining its assets. And I applaud you for spending so much time and focusing on, you know, efforts to maintain our assets and improve our assets. I think it's a lesson that we can all learn at the town level about you know, how to invest in our facilities and our assets and not to try to cheap out, if you will, because as a result, now we're going to have to spend exponentially more money to do it properly. Where we could have spent the 259 years ago, and it would have lasted much longer than that. And I, you know, I suggest that the Plymouth River Courts will be good for another seven, eight years or so, and then they're probably going to need, you know, another resurfacing. So it's, I guess it's just how you you look at how you want to spend your maintenance dollars and your investment in your capital facilities. The turf, just a clarification, the turf opened in the fall for homecoming in 2013. It was used very limited basis that fall and then opened in 2014 in earnest. So it's only been seven to eight years that the turf has been in place. So I think I think it's great that you're focusing on the facilities. Hopefully, we won't need to replace the turf too soon. When we originally put it in, we were quoted seven to 15 years in terms of replacing the carpet. I know that's a pretty broad range, and I know Liza, for one, is advocating and starting to put away money to to, you know, think about the replacement of that carpet. So obviously, something that needs to be be considered and planned for from a capital perspective. But I've seen it recently. I think it's still in good shape as long as it's maintained, fluffed and, you know, re-sanded and re re-rubbed, if you will, from time to time and maintained. It can last, you know, quite a while longer before replacement is necessary. So thank you for spending the time on this and look forward to to seeing more facilities improvements.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Ray, and we appreciate that history. And that's exactly what we're trying to do is make sure we have a strategy, look at this a little more strategically. Okay, 9.4 is to discuss school committee office hours. Tim, do you want to talk about this one?
Sure. We've been in talks over the last several weeks about reinstating the school committee office hours that people might remember from last winter. And we originally scheduled the first office hours of the year for December 14th, which didn't happen because we had the superintendent interviews, which then took precedence and were scheduled after we originally scheduled it. But we are going to have them on January, I'm looking at my calendar, 4th. So it's the first Tuesday in January, and I think we're looking to repeat them every first Tuesday after that. So, yeah, the first one is going to be Michelle Air and I on that day. And I'm looking forward to it. So we will be, I think it'll be an hour and a half. It'll be held over Zoom. And we will listen to people's questions and concerns. And I know one thing, we're not, I don't expect to have the answers to everyone's questions. I don't think Michelle has probably more answers than me, but no, we will are not expecting to have all of the answers, but we will take all of the concerns back to the committee and yeah, I don't know if Michelle, you want anything more to say?
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, no, I'm looking forward to it as well. Yeah, it's a great opportunity for folks to come and, you know, share concerns or raise questions or issues, some things we can handle, some things we may bring back to administration or, you know, direct folks to who they might get answers from. But it is a good way to engage with folks in a little less formal way than this meeting can sometimes be. And it gives time for a little more back and forth too, that we're sort of not able to do in these types of meetings.
And I also want to say, I know we're doing it on a Zoom format. I know that's not ideal for some of the people. I did reach out to different people in the community who I know would be interested in it and ask them, what format do you want? Because honestly, I know Michelle and I were happy to do it in person, happy to do it Zoom. People said it would be more convenient for, especially parents, we'd get more community involvement. So I think the first one we're doing on Zoom, but I think that depending on the basis of the world and whoever's doing the office hours for that particular month, their schedule, like, I think we're open to doing them in person.
Yeah.
And we're going to take that sort of decision on a month by month basis.
Great. Thank you, Tim, for spearheading this and for Michelle for volunteering for the first one. I see Barbie Lynch has her hand up if you want to unmute yourself.
Hi, Barbie Lynch, 3 West Moreland Road. I just wanted to know on that first one, if there's a time and where to find the information to sign up for that Zoom. And I just wanted to say, I actually think this is really great. I'm looking forward to a few of these and getting to know you all on a more personal level.
Awesome. Thank you. I know this is sort of the first thing that we've tasked Heather Cashman, the new communications director. So yes, we'll be sending out information. It will be from 7 o'clock until 8:30 on Tuesday, the 4th, and they will definitely be assumed that will be widely publicized. So I'm not, I'm not, I know we're going to be posted on sort of all of the normal Facebook groups that things get posted on, but there will be a mass email and a I didn't get details on her strategy for getting the word out, but she's, you know, a pro, so it should be good. And if things don't have, you know, if somehow we can tweak that in future months, like, I'm definitely interested in getting feedback on how the rollout and how people found the links and all of that went.
Yeah, and people won't have to sign up, right?
Right. No.
Yes.
Great. Also, sorry, we should also share that it's also can be a drop in too, like, you don't have to stay for the whole 90 minutes. You can just come in, drop a question or a thought, and then, you know, you don't have to stay for the whole thing.
Right.
But you're welcome to as well.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. I think we lost you on there for a minute. She's back. All right, next is 9.5. All right, next is 9.5 to hear about the Wellness Subcommittee request for financial and operating information from the booster groups and PTOs. Liza, do you want to speak to this one?
Yeah. So the maybe if Carrie or somebody can put the letter up on the screen and then I'll read through. Our efforts on the Wellness Committee is, you know, we're looking, we're looking at equity, we're also looking at athletics. And we have, we appreciate all the support that the many groups in town provide to the, to the public schools, all the athletic booster groups. But then we also start talking about the PTOs, the drama parents, music parents, ATF, all the other organizations. And we also hear in all of our budget hearings how much support these groups provide and how much parents are involved. And we realized we don't actually have that data. And for a variety of reasons, federal Title IX laws, other labor laws, we really do need to collect this data. And then also to help us inform our budget planning as well. So we drafted this letter. I can, you know, it, it's, it's also to collect best practices from organizations so that we can see where things are working really well and support other groups on, on how they're operating. And if a group is, you know, many groups are really well organized, if they can just share their documents, if they're registered as a 501(c)(3), they have to publicly produce these documents anyway, so we're, we're asking them to just share them with us. And the Athletic Director Jim Quattramoni has already informed booster groups a while ago that he was going to be asking for this information, so this is supporting him and his efforts as well. And we wanted to share this with the full committee, so you were aware of us wanting to take this next step. And also to have wider communication to the broader community that this would be coming. So, so that's why we're sharing it today with all of you. It's really with the best intentions of, we've got to start somewhere to collect this information, and this is a way of starting to ask for this information so that we can be more informed ourselves.
Hey, does anyone have any questions or comments on that?
And I did share it with the principals. And so that they will help us with getting the letter out to the groups. And the Athletic Director will send it directly to the Athletic Booster Groups as well. So that's where we are.
I, I had a couple of questions on it. So first of all, who, who is actually going to be collecting all of the data? Is it the school committee or is it, or is it an administrator taking this?
It would go, my vision, it would go back to the Athletic Director or the principals, and then they would share it with us.
Okay.
So that needs to go in the letter.
Yep. And the two other things. So one is we did update our policy on these groups, the fundraising groups and fundraising. Would it make sense to share that with these booster groups at the same time?
Yes, we can.
So they know what it is.
Yep.
And then the, the only other thing is, I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, I didn't see any reference to Title IX in the letter.
We didn't. We just wrote, address legal compliance requirements. We didn't specifically say Title IX. We can add Title IX specifically, but there's also labor laws that about listing any volun, any positions paid for by outside groups in the collective bargaining room. And so we can be very specific, but
Yeah.
I also left it at just legal requirements.
No, I know, that definitely covers it. I just wonder if, just to get people thinking along those lines.
I can definitely change that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, don't, don't exclude any of the other legal requirements. We need to make sure. But yeah.
Okay.
All right. Does anyone else in the committee have any questions or comments on this one? Okay, I see Josh Ross has his hand up, someone. Josh, I think I allowed you to talk. There we go.
There you go. You good?
Yep.
All right, Joshua Ross, 125 Wompeta Grove. So, and Fawcett, Liza and I talked about this a little bit today, because I saw this on the agenda, so I was curious to what it is. And I so I think it, this is, this is good, but I, I think I want a little bit more clarification on what you consider organizations, what organizations fall into this, because as you all know, that it's not just boosters and the PTOs that help fund events and, and capital projects and things for our students, you know? We have HSP, SNAP, CPAC. So you know, my question is why only boosters and PTOs on this? And what sort of parameters do you have for, or would fall into your policy? What, what organizations?
So our, our policy, I'm trying to pull it up right now, it's my computer is being slow. Our policy does specifically define which organizations. Let's see. No, it, it doesn't list them out, but it kind of. So I'm going to share my screen.
So this is actually, so I alluded to this earlier, Carrie, just on Josh's question. And I alluded to this when I was explaining this school committee, but I wasn't specific enough. I would like to also ask those organizations, ATF, HSP, SNAP, CPAC, for, for them to provide their information, too, of how they contribute so that we have an understanding and how they're organized. Because they are, many of them are very well organized and, and support us very well. And that could help us with informing other groups. It could also help inform us of what do we need to do better? And for us to be able to inform the town, like, hey, this is the support that other people are providing that we wish we could provide, and without them, we wouldn't have these great things in our schools. We need to start somewhere of collecting that data and that information, if possible. And I'd hope they would be willing to share that with us. So if the rest of the committee is, is good, I'd like to send this communication to them as well.
Yeah, Josh. So clarification of Josh's question, CPAC is not a fundraising group. I thought, I think you were talking about fundraising groups.
Yeah, that wouldn't, CPAC shouldn't fall under this.
Okay.
Josh, did that answer your question?
Can you still hear me?
Yep.
Oh, yes. So, and the reason I ask is because, and, and most of you know who've been on PTO before, is, you know, a lot of times we work in conjunction with these other groups. So I know in the past that, you know, we've had conversations with Hef on their fundraising efforts. And so what we do for the PTO, we want to make sure we don't overlap, right? So, so it's not just we work in, in silos. So I think if you're collecting this data, you need to collect it from everyone. Because regardless of what this committee does, you know, we, we do our best to work in unison with, with everyone. So to get a full picture of what everyone in town is doing, I think it's, you know, only appropriate and fair to ask, you know, all the groups who raise money to support, you know, all the students in town on, on what they're doing.
Yeah.
And I've let the PTOs know that this is coming.
Great. Yeah, no, I think this, one thing this is going to allow us to do is really highlight the amount of support we get from, from parents and from, from these groups, because it's significant. It really is. And people, I mean, having been a former PTO person, a lot of times people think the school does X, Y, and Z. When it's really, it's really the PTO groups and the parents that are coming, that are funding it. So, so yeah, I would, I'd support that, too, asking the groups that aren't necessarily Hingham Public Schools, if they'd be willing to share their information, too. Is everybody on the committee okay with sending that out?
So just to clarify, so you're talking additionally, HSP, Hingham Education Foundation, and then is there anyone else?
You could do, you could do SNAP, too. Are there any other community organizations that I think should be included? Yeah, no. No, and I mean, I think with these outside organizations, because they're not Hingham Public Schools organizations, we can't require it, but we can certainly ask, and they're, they're generally so supportive that I, I would think, I'd expect that they would help us out.
Not, I'm not sure whether parameters, I know Hingham Pride Project is fundraising and works with the schools. I don't know if they'd be included in this.
Yeah.
If we're talking about anyone that does fundraising and some of those funds go to the schools.
Maybe the Unity Council as well, then.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, I would say that, you know, this is the start of this, so we can start logging them, we can start keeping track of them. We can add, and as we think of things, but we've got, we're, we're starting someplace. And it's an important start to, and especially with communicating with the whole community. When we go into the budget ask, I think this will be really good information. And then, you know, we, we are looking, this started with looking at equity and how the different groups, do they support our students equitably? And especially in athletics. And then it got to, well, if we've, we're looking at athletics, we need to look at all activities. And then the discussion of with, why does, we've had this conversation for many years. Why do the Drama Parents Association have to provide several thousand dollars to contribute to the shows every year? So that's just why it broadened of, let's get it from everybody and see where we are.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you for putting that together for every on the Wellness Committee. I think this is going to be good information to get.
Great, thank you.
All right, so 9.6 is to receive a homeschool application for a 10th grade student and act as appropriate. Gary, are you on?
Yes, we have one homeschool application tonight for a 10th grade student. It has been reviewed by my office and meets the guidelines set forth by the school committee, and I recommend approval.
Great, thank you. Any questions? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the application.
I will make a motion to approve the application for homeschooling as recommended by the superintendent.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor? Michelle?
I.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
I.
Tim?
I.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So the application is approved. Item 10 is Subcommittee and Project Reports. Michelle, do you want to start us off?
Um, sure. Building Committee is very busy, meeting weekly. I know this committee got an update from Ray Estes to get our, well, our last big meeting like this. But we're, but thank you to Jennifer Arnold and Dr. Maestas and Dr. Lubilawa, who are working on some last-minute updates and answers to some questions from the MSBA and to the work of the design firm and all the folks on the Building Committee. There are some really dedicated folks on the Building Committee, and at some point, we owe them all a huge debt of gratitude. Someday their names will be up on that building, we hope, right? And someday sooner rather than later, but really a lot of work going into that committee, so really appreciate all their efforts. I'm just trying to think. Metco, we had a coffee earlier in the month with the Metco families, although we didn't have any family show. I think it was a combination of the date being very early in the month and it also being December. But we'll have our next one in first Wednesday in January, right after the break, and I think that's it for me.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Jen, do you have anything?
We had our policy Subcommittee meeting last week on the 13th, and then we will meet again to resume with everything on January 5th, is our next meeting. And then I, sorry. And then I will also be attending the Foster PTO meeting in January, and the Foster School Council meeting in January.
Great, thank you. Ness?
I have an update from the Strategic, the Sustainability Budget Task Force. So as you know, we meet weekly. The latest update is that we are continuing to research potential non-tax revenue sources. We're researching examples of towns with budget allocations by revenue percentage. So towns that might look at the schools get a certain percentage of the budget and the municipalities get the other percentage. So there are some towns that do that. We're looking at that. Analyze budget growth, population, school enrollment, income trends, and metrics. We are discussing strategies to control personnel costs. So talking about our negotiations and how that, that plays out to our budget. Looking at preliminary fiscal 23 budget forecast and projected deficit. And the key takeaway is that revenue, we, on the revenue side, researched many revenue sources. The Strategic Budget, the Sustainability Budget Task Force report will include a summary and recommendations for sources to pursue. No new revenue sources are short-term fixes and a need to focus on economic development. South Hingham and commercial opportunities. On the expenditure side, assessed current expenditures, looking for ways to reduce costs, measuring Hingham against benchmark towns, and recognizing that Hingham budgets are lean. No redundant services have been found yet. And then considerations, pursuing real estate transfer fee as potential revenue source. We've been working collaboratively with the municipality in the school task force year round. And considering a budget split based on the agreed upon percentage of the town revenue. So as, you know, as mentioned, we meet weekly. We did have two opportunities for the public to meet us, for Liz Klein and myself, for office hours. We will continue those in January. We expect to have a draft report by mid to late January.
Great, thank you, Ness. Carlos, do you have anything?
South School Council met on, on the 8th. They are continuing to work on the improvement plan for the next, for the next year. And also the Climate Action Subcommittee met. And they have been getting a lot of support to call on the Board of Selectmen, the Board, the Advisory Board to include a sustainability director that new budget. Some of the entities that have signed on is the Hingham Unity Council, Cleaner Green, Cleaner Green, Hingham Climate Action Planning Committee, Hingham Energy Action Committee, and several other committee, the planning board actually are working and editing the resolution. But they are looking forward to get the support from other entity as well. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Carlos. Tim, do you have anything?
Yeah, sorry. My kid was on cuffs of his own doing. I, the SPED Committee, the Special Ed Subcommittee did not meet this month. The superintendent interviews and search got, it sort of took control of everything. Have to meet last week, the Hingham Educational Foundation, but I was unable to go because of the superintendent interviews, and I will, I did not check to see if there was an update, but I will before next meeting.
Great, thanks, Tim. Last one?
Salary Negotiations is meeting on Wednesday with Unit B for talking about some negotiations with them for return to school issues. And we're also going to talk preliminarily about preparing for the new superintendent agreement. And then the Wellness Subcommittee, we need to schedule something. We want to hear how this went with this letter out to the groups. And Middle School School Council will be meeting in the end of January again. And middle school, school council will be meeting in the end of January again.
Great, thank you. I just have PRS attended their school council meeting. And we talked about, just to reiterate something that Gary had said at the beginning of the meeting, the testing is extremely cumbersome. And the contact tracing that the nurses are doing, they're doing a great job, but it's just, I mean, it's taking, dealing with COVID is taking a lot of energy from the nurses and from the school staff. And then we also talked about the toolbox box, social emotional tools that all the elementary schools use. And the PRS team is looking at how to get the information out to parents to try to get them more familiar with the tools. It's really effective with the kids when, once they learn them, they, they use them independently and they can, and it's, it's really good. So, so yes, they, they talked a little bit about that, too. I think that's it. So number 11 is items not reasonably known 48 hours in advance of the meeting. And we do have one that we had talked about is came out of executive session. Gary, do you want to walk everyone through that?
Sure. So we have a situation, this is relative to substitute pay.
Yep.
So we have a situation in the district where we have minimal subs in the school district. These are teacher substitutes. And, you know, we, you know, for an example, we may have eight or 10 teachers out and we got two subs. And one of the problems that we have is just attracting substitutes because the, the pay, the rate of pay is not competitive with neighboring school districts. So we discussed tonight the possibility of, of looking at, at increasing that pay so that we can be more competitive. And we will, and the proposal, not necessarily a proposal, but what the outcome was is actually increasing the pay to $125 per day. Right now it's $105 a day, so we'd increase it by $20. And during this interim time, we would analyze subpay with other school districts to actually gain an understanding at a high level what other districts are paying. I, I think there are significant indications that lead the administration to believe that other districts are paying more than, than, than Hingham is. I know my former district is paying about $20 more. And we're, we're in direct competition with other school districts. So the outcome is to, you know, look at increasing that pay for the remainder of the school year. And during that period of time, the human resources director will do a study and bring it back to the school committee to then appropriately evaluate and determine what that rate would be moving forward.
Great, thank you. So we think we need a vote for this one. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to increase the daily substitute pay rate from $105 a day to $125 a day effective January 3rd, 2022, for the 2021 to 2022 school year. Or to conclude at the end of the 21, 22 school year.
Liza, you wanted to say teachers in there?
Oh, for substitute teacher daily rate.
Thank you, Josh.
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, any further discussion? Oh, I see Barbie Lynch has a hand up. I'm trying to unmute Barbie.
Sorry about that. Barbie Lynch, three West Moreland Road. Is that the rate, the 105 rate, is that the rate for teachers after their grace period that you're referring to? And then my second, actually I have a comment in regards to it really quickly is that I'd love to make the suggestion, and maybe it's something we can discuss at another time, maybe in your special meetings that you'll have coming up about doing some training for substitute teachers. As a substitute teacher myself, I have to say, each school is different in the regards to, some might do the eyes up, the, you know, those things to get kids attentions and going in as a brand new sub to a different school, it'd be nice to know what all those little things are that each school does. It will, might make it a little bit easier to attract people to know that they have some training for some of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Barbie. John, do you have the answer to the first part of her question?
The, so the that, that, that was relative to the 105. There's the, and that 105 rate, the way the, the, the per diem rates are structured now is like after the 10 days of being a sub, that's when you move from $93 a day to $105 a day. So I think that the vote was for the 105.
Right.
And I don't know if the committee wanted to take action on the night. The other rate is teachers, new hires are $93 a day. And I mean, I think that, well, I, I don't know who's responding or who's not responding to sub assignments these days. You know, you, you would think that they, we have a, I think we have a number of subs that have been with us for a time. And they're also signed up for other communities as well. So I think the deal is by increasing this, we're looking to attract them to Hangham.
Right. Yeah. So Michelle and then Liza.
Yeah, sorry. Liza, you may have had your hand up first, but I was just going to say, still, and I don't know if I'm going way off the, way off base here, but it feels like if we're trying to attract people and we're trying to maybe bring in some new people, I think just make the sub rate temporarily for this school year only, the 125. Whether they've done one day or they're on their 11th day, I just don't see, I mean, particularly if that's, if that's the goal, is to try to attract more people.
Or if you're going up, I mean, Michelle, to keep them in balance, I mean, go up $20 for each of them. So, I mean, you know, you know, the, and that's till the end of the year. I mean, we, we still do want to get, you know, hard data from the surrounding communities. So.
Well, so I also understood it that we're making this change tonight. And then the staff is going to come back to us fairly quickly and in the new year and give us some more clarification. And we may adjust again. So I guess I, I kind of agree with Michelle, like if we're really in this crunch right now. They put everybody for the moment at that rate and, and we then adjust, but we don't want to lower it. That's the only problem. I wouldn't want to overpay it. I don't know. But I, I feel like we need to do this tonight. So starting January 1st or January 3rd, we're a little higher. And then in, you know, two weeks later, if we have to address, adjust, we adjust when we have the more further data.
Some more information, yeah. Is anyone else? I mean, I, I'd support doing, increasing them by $20 each, so both the group, during the grace period and then, you know, because I do hear what you're saying about we, we are in a crunch and we need, we need people. So I don't know, where, where is everyone else on this?
Any agreement with that, Carrie?
I agree.
Yeah, I do too.
Yep.
So 93 to 113 or 105 to 125?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yep. 113 to 125, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So do you want to make an amended motion?
Sure. So I will amend my motion to change the substitute teacher rate of pay for new substitutes of increasing the $93 a day to $113 a day. And for experienced substitutes, the 105 rate will be increased to $125 per day effective January 3rd, 2022, to conclude at the end of the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Okay. Oh, I apologize. I see two more hands up. I'm just now, Heather, if you could unmute yourself.
Hi, Heather Chisholm, eight Black Horse Lane. Just in particular, I was wondering, is it being addressed why the teacher absences are so high? Is it COVID related, related? It just seems particularly high at the high school where kids, actually the other day were shoveled into the cafeteria or the auditorium because so many teachers were absent. So I just didn't know if that was being addressed of why the absences are so high.
Yeah, I believe we are looking at that, right?
Yeah, I think one of the, you know, issues that we have to understand is, you know, what absent, what is the absenteeing? Because we had, I think at the high school, we had 10 out Friday, which, which, when you don't have subs to fill that, it, it makes it very difficult. So you land up moving students around because we can't find subs. Or we take teachers off of a duty or off of a prep period to actually cover that class. So it just becomes the, the, you know, a significant burden on the administration to be able to do that. So it's, hopefully this will actually help with that. And hopefully we can have a campaign to get more subs. But I think the comment is, is well taken as to, you know, we, we do have a number out. But again, I think, I, I don't know what that trend is. I, I really don't. That's something that should be discovered.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't think, does anyone else have anything else for 48 hours? Okay, seeing that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, we need to vote. Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, Michelle?
I.
Hi. Hi.
Ness?
I.
Carlos?
I.
Tim?
I.
Liza?
I.
I'm an I as well. And thank you for the reminder. All right. So now I wish to adjourn.
Now I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, Michelle?
I.
Jen?
I.
Ness?
I.
Carlos?
I.
Tim?
I.
Liza?
I.
And I'm an I as well.